Especially if it's gonna be hot, you know.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the city council meeting for the city of Warrenville for July 1st, 2019. I have a roll call, please.
Alderman Ashauer is excused. Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Kershaw.
Here.
Alderman Weidner.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as you are able and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a presentation this evening on item 6C, a potential development in the city of Warrenville, and we have quite a group of dignitaries here to make their presentations. So, please, come up front, identify yourselves, and, as John Davis at the Plan Commission would say, tell us your story.
Is it on? Can you hear me? I'm a little bit short, so, just a little bit. I'm Beth Demus. I'm the executive director of the Alden Foundation, and with me is Michael Bailey. He's the president of Alden Design Group and our architect. I want to thank Mayor Brummel and all of the city council members for allowing us to present our project tonight. We've been working on this for a long time with the staff, and I believe we've come up with a proposal that you will all appreciate. We are requesting tonight your approval for Warrenville Horizon Senior Living Community, and we're requesting specifically a preliminary plat of subdivision, a rezoning of the subject property to our six multifamily, and a special use permit for preliminary planned unit development, and as you'll see in your report, there are some variances and exceptions. For the benefit of those of you who are not able to attend any of the Plan Commission meetings or hearings, I'm going to give you a brief introduction to the Alden Foundation and our mission, and then I would like to show you a short video which will give you a sense of what we do, introduce you to the seniors we serve, and also give you a sense of what we're proposing to build here in Warrenville. And then finally, we will very quickly go over the site plan and elevations with you. The Alden Foundation specializes in developing and providing affordable housing for seniors. We've been doing this since 1996, and to date, we've developed 900 units of affordable mixed-income housing for seniors in 13 developments throughout the Chicago suburban area. We have 12 affordable independent living communities, just like what we're proposing to build in Warrenville, and we also have one supportive living facility, which is assisted living for low-income seniors. We are known for our high-quality design, our attention to detail, and our exquisite interiors. To give you a snapshot of the seniors we serve, about 75% of our residents across all of our developments are single women, primarily widows. The remaining 25% of our residents are fairly evenly split between couples and single men. In terms of residents owning cars, on average, 69% of our residents own cars. Our developments are affordable mixed-income communities. What does that mean? It means that in our buildings, the rents are staggered at different levels to be affordable to seniors of different means. This is not a Section 8 development in which we're getting rental subsidies from the government, and the seniors are paying 30% of their income in rent. Instead, our rents will range from about $400 a month to $1,200 a month, and at the lower rents, the seniors would have to meet certain income thresholds. We're able to do this and build a high-quality development because of special funding, financing, that we get for development from both the federal government and the state. Most of our seniors live on $16,000 to $35,000 a year, and I want to point out that this is income, not assets. So, many of our seniors have savings from the sale of a home, maybe some investments, but they're primarily living off of Social Security and a pension. I think I'm gonna stop there, and we will show you the video, and then I'll come back. There are so many seniors who have worked hard all of their lives. They're living now on a pension or Social Security. They have savings from the sale of a home and some investments, but they really can't afford high housing costs.
A lot of these seniors have grown up here. They've married here. They've lived here for 50 years. They want to stay in their community as they age.
But they often find that they can't afford to maintain a home or keep up with the burden of having a home, and there are few affordable options for them to remain within their communities. Our housing provides them with that opportunity to stay near friends and family.
I can firsthand tell you that Alden is an incredible neighbor and partner in our community. The building itself is incredibly beautiful. The moment you step foot in there, you know it's high-quality. The residents there really have, right away, embraced Woodridge, and they want to always give back in any way that they can, and it has been just truly a remarkable addition. They are an essential part of who we are today.
These are not people that are just sitting in their apartment, watching TV. I get phone calls from residents about all kinds of issues, national and local, but I love the fact that they're very involved and engaged.
We are all about community at River Trails Middle School, and I feel like community means expanding. It means including others that are like-minded in terms of what our philosophy is, and we found that the residents over at Horizon, they love respect, they love responsibility, and they love to see our students demonstrating those skills.
Senior citizens are so valuable because they have so much to offer in the community, and when they are given exciting opportunities, they come alive, and they've always got a fresh perspective. And when we're filled up, we have more to give, and that's true of these seniors, and they have so much wisdom that we can learn from them.
I love hearing their stories. They've worked hard all their lives. They're warm and vital. They have so many diverse experiences, and they still have much to offer to the community. They're really an inspiration to all of us.
I lived on a beautiful street in Mount Prospect, and at one time had beautiful trees and very friendly people.
I've been a Barrington resident since 1954.
I was living in Naperville, Illinois, and it was a family community with a lot of kids.
This is my hometown, and I'm happy to be able to come back and live in a place like this that we can afford.
I go to church, which is right block away from here, and I pass by this area all the time, and I saw the sign, and I found out there was gonna be senior apartment. I said, "Wow, what a blessing if I can get in here."
Before I retired, I was a lab technician. I went back to school.
I worked for a group health insurance company.
We had an antique store, and I had a partner.
I was a barber in Evanston. I had my own barber shop for 49 years.
I worked as a nurse at a hospital in Chicago.
I got a job at Jewel, with Jewel Tea Company at the time, as a maintenance engineer.
And I was in that field for over 40 years.
So, between my husband and I, we both kinda had to hustle a little bit to put seven kids through college, being immigrants especially.
Oh, it is so important that I can live near my family.
I have seven children.
And we had three children.
You know, I love kids. I have 16 grandchildren of my own.
14 grandchildren.
Six grandkids and 15 great-grandchildren.
After my retirement, I had to live on my fixed income, which wasn't much, and I was really hoping that I can get into someplace I can afford.
I just couldn't do the cost anymore, and so I was looking for something more affordable, but a place that was close to where all of my friends and family are.
Well, my children were worried about me living alone, and it was time to get someplace where I would be safe.
My daughter came to visit from Arizona, and after the visit, she said, before she left, she said, "Mom, I don't have to worry about you anymore. We really have a wonderful place here."
I was living in the area, and I'm glad that I could get into the Mount Prospect Horizon, and because there's so much to do here.
We have the exercise room. We have movies. We bring in entertainment.
The seniors are very active. They look for things to do. Well, I had organized a line dancing class, and it was great.
We really have wonderful parties, and we had a lot of, it's a Kentucky Derby. All the ladies made hats.
My partner and I, we love to dance, and we dance two or three times a week. Dancing makes me feel alive, like feel like a youngster.
If you really want something to do, there are more activities than you can really spend your time doing.
Woodridge Horizon is special to me because it's a beautiful place to live.
It's a nice feeling to know that we have affordable housing in the community.
There are so many good people that live here, and they have been so kind and welcoming to me. I mean, I'm really, really grateful.
I feel very welcome to here, and I feel very home here.
It feels like home, and I'm just delighted to be here.
So, I hope that gives you a sense of what we're proposing to do here in Warrenville. There was something that I forgot to mention that I wanted to mention to you, which is the minimum age in our Horizon communities is 62-years-old, but the average age is somewhere mid-to-late 70s. So, okay, we have put up the site plan. I'm gonna just give you a very, very brief overview of the proposal. Warrenville Horizon will be a 71-unit, three-story, brick masonry, independent senior living community to be built on four parcels of property on Batavia Road. It's kinda west of Butterfield, but it's like this, so it's up here. There will be 56 one-bedroom apartments and 15 two-bedroom apartments, including one two-bedroom apartment for a live-in maintenance manager. So, this is independent living, not assisted living, not memory care, not nursing care. So, there are no supportive services associated with the building. Each apartment has a fully-equipped kitchen with a dishwasher and standard-size appliances, so our residents must be able to cook and care for themselves. However, we do provide, as you could see in the video, a lot of common area amenities for the residents to congregate and socialize. We also offer a calendar of events and activities for them. Woodridge Horizon, no, sorry, wrong W suburb, Warrenville Horizon, will include a community room with a kitchen, a warming kitchen for parties, a library with internet access, a fitness center, a theater room, and a billiards and game room, and I'm probably leaving something out, but lots of beautiful areas for the residents to congregate. In terms of staffing, there will be one full-time property manager in the building, five days a week, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and also a part-time maintenance manager who will be living in the building. Over the past several months, we have been responsive to and worked with the planning staff and Plan Commission members to improve the architectural character of the building and the site plan from what we originally had proposed. The, we have pulled the building back from the floodplain, properties along the river, and away from the house to the west, which allows us to have more green space behind the building and minimize the impact on the trees on the perimeter of the site. We've also changed the exterior architectural design to be more in line with the Old Town Civic Center sub-area plan, and it's more of a town-center type of character. Finally, we've been working with the DuPage Forest Preserve District on, when we acquire all four parcels, the plan is to donate 1.6 acres to the forest preserve district, and they're pleased about that because that helps them continue the property that they own to the west. So, I think I will stop there. That ends my presentation, and are we taking questions later or questions now?
We can do questions if the council members have any questions at this point. I think you were pretty thorough.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you for a very complete presentation. Okay, we'll move on to citizens' comments for this evening. We have two folks who have signed up, Dorothy Dear, welcome Dorothy, and Bob Seibert. So, is anything going on, Dorothy?
I'm Dorothy Dear. I live at 30 West 077 Penny Lane in Maple Hill. I'm representing Warrenville and Bloom. It's kind of an exciting time for us here because the American Bloom judges from the National Organization will be here next week. Next week, they come in on Sunday evening, and we'll tour our entire town on Monday and Tuesday, and they will be, they're supposed to see almost 80% of the town. They'll be visiting at City Hall, at the Park District, the library, the Historical Museum, the Tavern, Public Works, and some of the bridges. They'll be walking in some of the parks and looking at our beautiful flowers. I do want to say that we've really done a lot of work this year. We had an information meeting in March and drew quite a number of new volunteers. Thank goodness we did that this year because it really helped. We've also partnered with some of the business properties, and we've spiffed up Warrenville Commons somewhat. If any of you go over there, the sign area has got flowers all around it, and we've helped at Ace Hardware Area also. This Saturday, we're putting a planting area by the sign at Exploring Flooring. So, businesses are cooperating with us and donating to us to have us help them do that. We are asking everyone who may be watching this to pick up litter because overall impression is one of the things out there will be judging us. Pick up litter, make your, and pick up litter that you isn't even in your own property. I've got two bags of it in my car right now. And make your front yard as nice as you can make it. Put flowers out there, even pots if you don't have a good place to plant perennial flowers. If you have a business property, do it on your business property as well. Anything that can make our town look wonderful. You have a few days to do it. It doesn't take much. Next Tuesday evening, we will have a special dinner evening with the judges, and all of you aldermen have been invited to come, and city leaders as well, and if anyone is here who wasn't invited, you certainly could join us. Just email me or contact Emily. Quite a few of you haven't responded, so I hope that you will respond and come, and it'll be a good time. The mayor will talk, and the judges will talk, and we'll recognize our volunteers, and we have a little skit for you, so it'll be a good time. I want to recognize the two brothers. They are donating the food for our supper, and Chue's is donating chips and sauce on the tables, so we appreciate that. We'll also take the opportunity to raffle a couple of birdhouses, rent houses, that the mayor built for us. We have, I think it's 13 of them, to raffle off at the different events all summer long, so we'll do a couple of them at this event. We also are thinking, we're almost sure that we're gonna have an Arbor Day covered with flowers, so that you can have your picture taken surrounded by flowers, and that will be kind of a, something extra to do. So, come mingle and enjoy. And at another city council meeting, I'll come and talk to you about the national program that, the National American Bloom Symposium that will be in St. Charles, and it's right in our neighboring city, so that is why we are entering this year because it's so nearby, and we would like some of you to attend.
Thank you, Dorothy, and thank you for all the efforts. Looks great out there. Bob?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. The development is going in a TIF district. All development is not economic development. TIF districts require economic development due to the statutory goal of economic improvements that are necessary to benefit the taxpayers in the underlying taxing districts. What is economic development? Economic development in the lowest terminology that you can see is the fact that the development would give more to the taxpayers in the underlying taxing districts than it would To give you an idea, in the submittal, in the submittal for the plan, item number four, public welfare, the PUD will not, that be a detriment to the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. Yet, there is no data submitted. It's only a statement. In DuPage County, the DuPage County's average household annual income is $84,000. So, we can see that there won't be a huge benefit on the income of the individuals to spending for the local economy. Yet, in TIF III, it was presented with a large data on the apartments that their income would be $80,000 per household. The property tax, in a TIF district, is completely dependent, for its success, on the property tax. There's no other item there. It is the property tax, the increase in the property tax that generates the revenue and generates the benefit at the end of the 23-years to the underlying taxing districts. During the public hearing, there was a statement that currently they are proposing to pay property tax even though one of the partners, Alden, is non-taxable, the other is not. So, I asked the question if this would continue. The answer, never say never. Really? In a TIF district would say a statement like that? The fire district, one of the underlying taxing districts, stated, when I spoke with the chief, to send the fire truck and the ambulance for a call with the individuals is $800. Assuming that these individuals with the stated income and the age are on Medicare or Medicaid, they, the fire department, would receive, according to the chief, $220 per run. That means there is a cost of $580 on each run that would be given to the rest of the citizens, the taxpayers. So, we're having a problem here with economic development for a TIF district. It may be feasible or advisable in another area, but TIF districts have specific goals and objectives. Then, the fourth item, during the public hearing, I asked the question, are there any requirements or controls over the type of individual that would be allowed to take Specifically concerned about the individual in Aurora and how the other 20 individuals in Aurora, it will be moving. The answer was, we follow the Illinois Fair Housing Financial Standards. Therefore, I can only assume that there are no restrictions, controls, investigations as to the individual's previous convictions. I think that it is important in TIF districts to go for the objective and goal of the TIF district, which is economic development. Some developments simply do not belong in a TIF district. I don't believe this belongs in the TIF district. It may belong somewhere else. The concerns that I have, also ask the question about the tax credits, did not get complete So, I think that total information has not been presented as questioned at a public hearing or submitted in the document that was given to the city. So, I would hope that before there are future problems, that these would be addressed. In TIF I, we addressed it so that we had a financial agreement with the developer that these situations would not occur.
Thank you, Bob. We have one other person who's signed up this evening, Pat O'Connor. Pat?
Pat, and my last name is O'Connor. I'm at 3570 Warren Avenue. I sit there, I love that idea about the new, what do you call it, the, those, the, the new Sydney Home, whatever you call it. I don't know what you call it. I love that. That is so cool. My question is, is my sister lives with my mom now. I have questions about this. I checked out.
I have question about this, I just, uh, is, if, if my sister need to, can come over and stay with my mom and go back and forth? I don't know. That's, like, that is my only question about that.
Thank you. Okay, Pat, perhaps you can talk to them privately and get your question answered. Okay, anyone else with something to say this evening that didn't sign up? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to official and staff comments. My comment tonight, I think the Fourth of July is this week. Something tells me we're hoping for a break in the weather. Our parade, of course, is the Third of July in the evening. And we have our fireworks on the Fourth of July in the evening. Complete schedule of all the fun events can be found on our website, our Facebook page, and the Park District website also. So if you want to know what's scheduled when, there's a full schedule of a lot of good stuff. It's your quintessential small-town celebration. We have a lot of folks that come from other towns every year just because of the flavor of ours. No difficulty parking, safe, fun, family-oriented, small community doing its best to show its heart. So everyone's welcome on the Fourth and the Third of July. The Third, again, the parade starts at 6:30 in the evening outside of City Hall here, goes to Cerny Park. And then the Fourth, oh, about 8:30, 9 o'clock, we have some fireworks. So come on out. We'd love to see you. Clerk? Okay, treasurer?
Thank you. None tonight.
Okay. And alderman? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. I just have a bit of fun here. I read on Joe Warrenville that there was a group of people, not sure who these people were, that were doing what I've done in other communities. They were painting rocks and placing them around the city, sort of as encouraging and fun things to do. And I popped into City Hall the other day and I found a rock. So it was very encouraging. It says, "Love is love," and it was kind of a message I needed that day. So I just want to say thank you to this group of people. One, I'm going to replace my rock somewhere. So, and second, I hope other people are doing this. It's really very fun. And so I'm just here to say thanks. It made my day.
Cool, thank you. Alderman Widener?
Yes, my neighbor wanted me to say something this evening. She had the unfortunate circumstance of having her purse stolen while she was at Buffalo Wild Wings over the weekend. And she just wanted to talk about the response she received from the Warrenville Police Department and pass that along to me. And the police officer, I guess, was there in moments. In fact, I think they were still utilizing the credit card at the store where they had gone to after they had stolen her purse. And, you know, when something like that happens to you, you can feel kind of embarrassed and not real good about your situation. And that officer, she said, was nothing but kind-hearted and very helpful and very professional. And I'm sure my neighbor's going to write a letter recognizing the officer who showed up so quickly and how it was so helpful. And she just wanted me to pass along and express appreciation for the fine work that the Warrenville Police Department does in our community. So if you could pass that along, chief, thank you.
Thank you, alderman.
And that was all.
Okay. Alderman Goodman?
I want to wish everybody a very happy Fourth of July. I want to second everything that Dorothy said about getting our town spiffed up for the American Bloom judges who are coming to town. But what I really want to emphasize is that over the Fourth of July weekend, the city is paying for some very nice fireworks. So let's try and keep the use of illegal fireworks in this town to a minimum. Let's try and make sure that if you want to have fun watching big explosions, that you come out to the very safe, big event that we're throwing in your honor so you can celebrate our Fourth of July and not have our police come knocking on your door enforcing our fireworks laws. Because we've got a lot of people here in the community who've expressed their concern about the use of fireworks in the past and the noise and the post-traumatic stress victims who have problems when that sort of noise is going on and all sorts of issues that can happen in terms of safety. So please don't, don't risk your safety. Come out and enjoy our beautiful fireworks instead of making a mess and setting things on fire and hurting yourselves. Thank you.
And we would not want to do anything to ruin Emily's birthday either, so. Thank you, alderman. Anyone else? All right, we'll move along to the administrator.
Thank you. I was going to mention the illegal fireworks and the problems with those, but I'll just wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July. And I'll see you all out at Cerny Park.
Thank you. And city attorney?
Happy, happy Fourth to everyone.
Thanks, Barb. All right, move on to the business of the meeting. The approval for the agenda of this evening. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda for the July 1st, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Any changes to that agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented. We have a couple of sets of minutes that need approval this evening also. Alderman Widener?
Yes, I approve, I move to approve the minutes of the June 17th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the June 17th, 2019 Closed Session Meeting.
Second.
Motion is second, second by Alderman Wilson. Discussion of those minutes. Again, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the minutes are approved. The consent agenda for this evening, item 6A. Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02019-35, adopting the DuPage County Countywide Stormwater and Floodplain Ordinance effective May 14th, 2019. B, accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02019-36, approving Lexington Trace subdivision advertising sign variations. C, accept Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals recommendations and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance approving the Preliminary Pla, Preliminary Planned Unit Development Special Use Permit and Planned Unit Development Variations for the Alden Foundation's Warrenville Horizon Senior Living Community Project. D, accept staff recommendation and approve the purchase of a replacement cab and chassis truck through the State of Illinois contract in the amount of $84,786 from Rush Truck Center of Springfield, Illinois. E, receive and file minutes of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on May 14th, 2014. F, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Regular Meeting held on May 16th, 2019. G, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting held on June 20th, 2019. H, receive and file report of invoices paid up to June 26th, 2019 in the amount of $104,429.40. And I authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before July 15th, 2015 in the amount of $247,535.15. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Goodness, lost it. Alderman Cressell?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Vivier?
Aye.
It's official, welcome to Warrenville. Okay, we have nothing under the regular agenda, no unfinished business, no new business, at least on this agenda, no closed session necessary. We do have the need for one final motion. Alderman Goodman?
I move to adjourn.
Second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn. Happy Fourth.